I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December 23 county commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly in the white folder. And Robert is not in the room. Ken is in the front row if you needed a listening device.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion on the agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second. All any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two are to approve the county commission minutes of December 16, 2014.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $363,160.60.
I'll make that motion to amend the agenda. The amount is actually 363.
I have a motion and a second to amend the bills as from what they were originally posted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Do we have to have a?
A motion to approve the amended.
We have a motion to approve the amended bill amount.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. A is the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of November 30, 2014, and the Lincoln and Minnehaw County Economic Development Association 2014 annual report. They have both been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion on routine actions?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second on routine actions. Are there any questions for Carrie? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to authorize the chairman to sign an updated administrative services agreement with Avera for Minnehaw County Health Plan. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning. A few weeks ago, you sought an administrative services agreement from Avera. We've had a last minute change related to coalition issue, and we'd like to add on now another fee for, or we're agreeing to add on at least another fee for second level appeal claims. It's a nominal amount. It depends on the claim review and how long it takes, so that it isn't specified in the contract, but with your approval, we request that we sign that and get that over to Avera.
Are there any questions for Carrie? Look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item C is to authorize the chairman to sign a stop-loss agreement with HCC Life Insurance Company for the Minnehaw County Health Plan. Carrie Deaver.
When I presented rates to you earlier this year, we talked about the cost of the stop-loss insurance, and you might remember that that typically goes up 10, 15, even upwards to 20 percent for us. It's a fairly significant cost. This year, when I presented, we factored in about 20 percent because that's usually what we are, but I indicated that we were getting a fairly competitive bid, and luckily enough, we did. We got a very good bid this year, and our stop-loss cost for next year will go down. But with that, then, we're changing providers or carriers, and I'm asking for your approval on the agreement. You'll notice in the briefing memo that that agreement actually has four different components. One is on the specific stop-loss itself, which is a $100,000 deductible. In essence, that's how that works. What we have done in the last few years to keep costs down is in addition to the specific stop-loss, we have an aggregate specific. So as soon as we hit that for any one individual, we also pick up an additional $100,000. No matter how many people hit it, we pick up the first $100,000 of that. The second agreement is that split funded endorsement. The third is with this organization, HCC, they've agreed to put a rate cap renewal for us so that we could know that we're not going to go over 45 percent increase in premiums for next year, and hopefully we'll be nowhere near that. But the third document is for that. And the fourth is the business associate agreement form, which is basically the privacy for health information.
Are there any questions for Carrie? Look for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item, notice and requests, a notice of a public hearing from the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission in the matter of the application of Dakota Access LLC for an energy facility permit to construct the Dakota Access Pipeline is on Thursday, January 22 at 5:30 PM in the Roosevelt Room, Ramcoata Hotel and Conference Center, 3200 West Maple Street in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is a petition. Oh. Ken.
Commissioners, along the notice and request line, I just thought it might be opportune, this would be an opportune moment to discuss a couple other things that are coming down the pike for your concern on this. First off, I want to, and it's on the calendar of upcoming events, is that on January 13, this county commission, the Sioux Falls City Council, and the Lincoln County Commission will receive a briefing from the Dakota Access Pipeline officials in advance of these public hearings that are being held. Next week on the agenda, you will also see a notice to the public and to the media of a report that we have on file, and this will be on next week's agenda of the pipeline's actual application and that to the PUC for this pipeline. And so that will be a document that will be on file in the auditor's office for review. There's a copy of it that we received this morning and that for commission perusal as well. But that will be on our agenda next Tuesday as an official notice that this document is available. So.
Thank you, Ken.
I'm sure. I guess I would like to just comment that I think we've all been contacted by different parties on this, and certainly it is an item of, in my opinion, great concern inasmuch as having a 30-inch oil pipeline go through our land. It could make a difference as far as agriculture. It could make a difference as far as economic development. It could make a difference as far as residential development. I mean, no one's going to build an apartment building on top of a 30-inch oil pipeline. And I think this is really an item that our community has to think about before we just give them the green light here.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Barth.
The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Pekus.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number 17451, the amount of $2,969.63. The commission office received a request for the compromise of lien, actually from the law offices of, I think, Hagan, Wilk, Archer. They were representing the applicant, and they noticed that there was this county aid lien that got flagged. Originally, it was for, believe it or not, going all the way back to April of 1972 and goes all the way through October of 1992. The couple was divorced in 1978. A copy of the divorce decree is attached for your review. The liens were still on record, and they occurred after the date of the divorce, which started, of course, back in 1990. Once again, this individual was divorced from her husband when he started receiving the benefits from the county. The applicant is requesting that her name be removed from the lien account and that the entire amount of the lien be left in the name of her ex-husband. Now, here's the interesting part. I gave you some of the dates earlier. Her ex-husband is now passed away. He is deceased. So by leaving it on the record for her ex-husband, believe me, we're not going to get that money back. However, I think in a spirit of what the essence of the law is, is that they were divorced when this lien was actually being accrued, and that because she was married to him at one time, it was still, the vestige of it was still being attached to her. So in the spirit of comity, she would like it to be removed without any further payment. There are two other options that we have. There's one way we can handle it. The lien could be discharged in payment with no payment, or the applicant's name could be removed from the lien account and the lien specifically released against the property legally described as Lot 23, Block 3, Resident Park Addition to the City of Sioux Falls, and specifically discharged in full with no payment. And of course, then, the title company would want to see that lien being removed against the property. Given the fact that the ex-husband is passed away, I believe that would actually create a little bit more of a stumbling block with the fact that his estate, whether or not, we don't know if there's a probate that's been done, but obviously, if we're still leaning that potential property, it would necessitate that lien to never ever be executed on. It would just muck up the paperwork. But I think we should go with option one. So I'll float a motion. I don't know if we'll get any second to it, but it would be to go ahead and discharge the lien without any further payment. Yeah, go ahead.
I know that the title company is also looking for the action to make sure it's against this particular piece of real estate as well, just to clean up their record.
All right, well, then, I'll make a motion to discharge in full with no payment and to have that be released as to Lot 23, Block 3, Resident Park Addition to the City of Sioux Falls.
Okay.
Oh, thanks, Jeff.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
And perhaps I wasn't as clear, but if we were just to leave it against the property, the fact that he is already deceased, all it does is it carries against that property, and it's one of those things that title companies are loath to have to handle because theoretically, somebody could come back and make a claim because there could be a potential within the next 10 years for a curative statute comes into play. Someone can make a claim for whatever claim against that estate, and so it does actually create some potential pitfalls in the future for having a clean and marketable title to this property. I don't know, and maybe Kirsten wants to speak to that as well.
The most important thing is that you specifically release it to the property to make sure what Commissioner Pekus is describing does not happen. The other stuff is just record-keeping issues. Frankly, with our lien cleanup, eventually, the deceased person's lien would be removed anyway, even if you did the other option, so. But make sure it's against the property if that's your intent, or it's not against the property if that's your intent.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any, is the applicant here? No. Any other comments or questions from the commission? I have a motion and a second to discharge this against the property with no payment. All those in favor.
I thought it was discharged in full. Dismissed against the property.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next is on DPNO number 84691, the amount of $1,631. And here, we received a request, let's see, and I jumped ahead to the wrong item. Okay. We received a request for a compromise of lien. Once again, the applicant in the process of securing a loan for some home improvements, and he just discovered that this lien was resting against him in the amount of $1,631. The lien was for Public Defender Services way back in 2000 and 2001. This is somewhat of a dated request. You'll notice that the dates go way back, just like the previous lien. Apparently, the reason why this just got flagged is that we've been discussing here at the commission the inclusion of the new case management software system here at Minnehaw County, and because of the inclusion of this new case management system, it was actually caught by the computer where this lien was languishing for quite some time. So once again, our new software system actually discovered this twist in this particular lien that's been sitting there. Once again, this didn't get registered until March of 2014 against the current applicant for the services that were done. And once again, we obviously have an individual that wants to move ahead with his construction activities. So the applicant was surprised when we received notification of the lien's existence. He's gone through several other obvious attempts to finance on his property for a variety of reasons, and this never got flagged, obviously because of the case management software not being used to actually discover this glitch in the system. So once again, the applicant thought the situation was long resolved and paid off back in 2001. He is currently employed. He has an annual income of $29,157. He's single. He has assets in the amount of $50,000 concerning, consisting primarily of his home, and liabilities of $30,000, mainly the outstanding loan balance on his home. He's requesting that the lien be discharged in full payment of $300. And of course, he believes that this is about the amount of time that his attorney spent in court. There is a statement that's been filed for the particular applicant, and it does appear, though, that the lien does include an actual jury trial that took place. And yeah, it looks like there was a full jury trial in this particular situation. So once again, looking at the grand total, he would like it discharged for $300, and we have a consistent, not policy, but precedent, to go ahead and to allow for 50 cents on the dollar. And I don't know if I'll get a second to this, but I'll discount this, and I'll make a motion. I don't know if I'll get a second, of $815.50, which would be 50 percent. I know the applicant is here. He may wish to address the commission. I don't know if I'll get a second to that.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I believe that we should accept the applicant's offer of $300, and so I'm not going to second John's motion.
All right, I'll make a motion then for $300.
Okay, have a motion for a second. I have a motion and a second for $300. Is there a comment from the commission, or do you want me to open up the applicant first?
I think he should be able to address the commission.
Yep.
He is here. He took time out of his workday to be here, and you know, obviously, you might want to admonish him that he doesn't have to come to the podium and say his name.
So if you, you don't have to get up or anything, you can just talk real loud from where you are? You don't have to say your name? Just?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate any consideration you can give. Even the $300 seems extreme to me, and it's really hurtful, and you explained it very well. I pay my bills and do really well. I keep it up with what I need to do, and for 14 years, I haven't heard of anything. I mean, it wasn't that the lien was there originally, because I was refinancing, and it only came onto the records in 2014, 14 years after the fact. It's really bad stuff, and I really appreciate it.
There was a lot of payments of other things in connection with that that were all made prior to this, so. Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, I agree with the applicant on this. I, you know, recently, my mother passed away, and I just got a bill the other day from the hospital for a procedure in 2009. And, you know, it just was astounding to me. I mean, my mom has been gone for eight months already, and then I get a bill from five years ago. I think that is an undue hardship, and I do understand that we did expend these funds to help this applicant, but I think that we also bear some responsibility here.
Any other comments? I think we'll have a roll call vote. To expend this lien for $300 payment.
Kelly?
No.
Pekus?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Hi, Booker.
Yes, motion passes three to one.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when anyone can speak at the podium, give your name and your address, and speak about something that is not on the agenda. Seeing no one, move on.
Regular business. Item 10 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 lease agreement between Metro Communications Agency and Minnehaw County. Darren Ketchum.
Good morning, commissioners. Mary Kresmus, Darren Ketchum, Director of Metro Communications. Just looking for your authorization for the chairperson to sign the lease agreement between Metro Communications and the county. The Metro Management Council took action on this at their meeting last week. I think it's been reviewed thoroughly by the council, and we have no concerns from our end, and just look for your approval.
Okay. Are there any questions for Darren?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign the lease between Metro Communications and Minnehaw County. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mary Kresmus, Darren.
Item 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign a agreement between Dr. Jeff Luther and Minnehaw County for quality assurance services for rural ambulance review. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, this is the annual renewal of the contract that we have with Dr. Jeff Luther, who does the quality assurance review for our rural ambulance service. As you know, his services this past year were quite instrumental when we did a review of the new license applications that we had to do for licensure in our dispatch areas. For the coming year, the agreement is, is still the same dollar amount. It's $30,000 for him to do this work, and I do anticipate that he will probably be a little busier this first year, this next year too, because of issues that we will have with District 5 and that pending out there because of the new carriers in the city of Sioux Falls in the spring of next year for ambulance service. One of the things that we've done that we have found is working quite well is we've got the ambulance services now bringing us on a regular basis their run reports, and they leave them down in our office, and then Dr. Luther will come down here and pick them up in order to do his reviews to make sure that those are timely and that he catches any issues that might pop up. So this is the new agreement, and we recommend approval on it.
Are there any questions for Ken? Look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to sign the agreement between Dr. Luther and Minnehaw County. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 12 is consider a motion to authorize the use of savings in the 2014 personnel budget for the Elections Department.
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Today, I've got a request to utilize unspent election personnel budget for operational election expenses. This year, we changed ballot tabulation machines as well as the ballot-producing services between the primary and general election. These factors and others increased election expenses above what normally occur. We approached the vendor, ESNS, for those amounts well ahead of time, but the bill showed up last week after our normal request time for budget shifts of this nature occur. That's why we're requesting this action from the commission to utilize unspent personnel budget to cover operation expenses. And the bills that came in were from ESNS. They're just under $5,000, and I have a little bit over $10,000 in my personnel account.
Are there questions for Bob?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Auditor, so what exactly is the number that you're requesting to use? I don't see it on the.
No, I said, it's about $4,000, and I'll get the exact number up to you if you'd like.
No problem. I'll make a motion to allow that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow the auditor's office to use personal budget items for additional expenses in the Elections Department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, commission. The next item I have, do you have to read yours, Cindy, or?
Well, I usually do.
Okay, very good. I tried to do change.
But you can do it if you'd rather. Item 13 is consider a resolution to quit claim deed tax deed property number 2560, RDID 42268, Lot 13, Block 28, Pettigrew's Addition to the City of Sioux Falls, to the Southeastern Development Foundation. Bob Litz.
Second item, commission, please. Last year, when we were working through the list of properties in the 2013 tax deed sale, CCOG had formed a nonprofit aimed at putting governor's houses on infill lots throughout the city. The name of the nonprofit is Southeastern Development Foundation, known as SEDF. SEDF wanted to tax deed property at 120 South Waltz Avenue, RDID 42268, and the commission decided to gift them the property for development purposes of affordable housing. SEDF was to be responsible for getting a quiet title action on the property. In that process, the property was discovered to have a federal tax lien. SEDF agreed to still take on the lot, pay for the title work, and leave it in the county name until such time as it was cleared. It has only recently become cleared of all such liens. The auditor's office would now like to convey tax deed title to RDID 42268 to SEDF for purposes of affordable housing. Action requested is that the commission unanimously sign, as required by Statute 7-29-26, the resolution transferring the tax deed quitclaim to Southeastern Development Foundation.
Are there any questions for Bob on this?
I'm going to have to make a motion to defer. This is going to be a huge mess. Madam Chair, we need to have this deferred, yeah, because Commissioner Benega isn't here, and this is my last meeting, and you're going to be missing.
Commissioner Benega is coming later. Can we put this to the end of the agenda?
Let's make a motion to defer this to the agenda.
At least to give an opportunity to show up.
Yep.
Motion to defer to the end of the agenda.
Maybe you want to call Commissioner Benega and just let him?
And see if he'll make it?
We'll see.
Okay.
Otherwise, this will be put indefinitely till end of February?
Yeah, it has to be.
I have a motion to defer this until the end of the agenda, number 13. Is there a second on that?
There's a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I think we should explain to our audience on television or whatever that the reason we have to do that is because to gift anything, we have to speak with unanimity, not just a three-vote majority, which we normally do.
And Commissioner Benega isn't presently here, and I'm, this is my last meeting. I'm gone next week.
Thank goodness.
Then I'm on the bench, and we'll be vacated one seat, so I don't know if you can have a unanimous decision with a vacated commission seat.
I would interpret that as no, but.
All right, okay. Well, first blush.
We will try to do it by the end of today.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll stand by.
Did we have the vote on that? Yep, we did. Okay.
Item 14, consider a motion to authorize the transfer of $551,672 from the Capital Projects Fund to the Debt Redemption Fund to utilize funds for the December 2014 debt service payment as part of the closeout for the Jail Kitchen Project. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, commissioners. Darlene Johnson from the auditor's office. It's been a while since we have finished the Jail Kitchen Project. There was a balance in there, and we're just requesting that you transfer it into our Debt Redemption Fund, and it's being used to pay debt services month.
Okay. Any questions for Darlene?
I'll make that motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the transfer of $551,672 from the Capital Project Fund into the Bond Redemption Fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
And item 14 is consider a motion to authorize the following 2014 budget supplements representing reimbursements and pass-through dollars. Darlene Johnson.
We have a number of supplements that we do at the end of each year. These are based on grant funds that we have received, other reimbursements that we have received, and a portion of those are in our pass-through grants. We're requesting, I don't know, do you want me to read all of them?
We're going to do one at a time, so there's a motion on each one.
Okay.
So do you want to read one, and we'll do a motion?
Perfect.
If that's okay with you.
Okay. The first one is from the General Fund to the Auditor's Election Budget, ASN 15189, Election Equipment, $217,625. That represents reimbursement from the city of Sioux Falls and the state of South Dakota Hava funds for the cost of the DS 850 tabulating machines that we purchased.
Is there a motion?
There is.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B.
Okay. Second, from the General Fund to the Human Services Budget, ASN 17370, Human Service Exercise Account, $395.39, representing reimbursement from the employee's share of the vending machine income.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item C.
From the General Fund to the Human Services Budget, ASN 17373, Bus Passes, $2,600 representing reimbursement from various organizations for the cost of printing bus passes that are donated to the county.
I'll move that.
I have a motion?
Second.
In a second, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item D.
From the General Fund to the Human Services Budget, ASN 17374, Human Services Donations, $5,000 representing donations for out-of-the-ordinary human services expenses.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
From the General Fund to the Safe Home Budget, ASN 18180, Safe Home Donations, $100 representing a donation to the Safe Home Budget.
I'll make that move.
Second.
A motion in a second, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
From the Pass Through Grants Fund to the Pass Through Grants Budget, ASN 20350, Other Professional Services, $40,610. ASN 20353, Hospital Preparedness Grant, $91,176. ASN 20356, ICWA Professional Services, $102,144, with all of these representing the federal grant funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And last one.
From the Domestic Abuse Fund to the Domestic Abuse Budget, ASN 21425, Other Miscellaneous Expense, $3,516 representing marriage and divorce fees collected in excess of the budget, and these are the funds that are passed through to the Children's Inn and Compass Center.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Darlene. Item 16, consider a motion to supplement $194,701.84 from the Emergency Management Fund to the various ASNs in the Emergency Management Budget, representing reimbursements from grant programs. Lynn DeYoung.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. In front of you is our typical year-end supplement with the grants that we work with. They're all listed within the memo, the tolls 194,701,84, and I'd request the Commission to authorize the transfer.
Are there any questions for Lynn? Look for a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
If I could ask Lynn a question.
Commissioner Barth.
Lynn, as we go forward, what's the prognosis for more grants of this type and other types that your department has been able to secure?
You know, I think unfortunately, there's always seems to be something going on. I think one of them that you saw earlier from Darlene's, item F, the hospital preparedness grant in $91,176 was one that we hadn't done, so we'll look to keep doing that the next couple of years and I think, you know, time will tell. Some of the grant funds are stable, some of them fluctuate. This one here, like I said, was one that we picked up and I think last week I sent you a memo of him, Darlene, and we're working on that, but another $30,000 that we used to, that we were able to find within the grant that I have and got reimbursement for some of the GIS work, so there's always grants and opportunities out there. It's just a matter of, I guess, putting our nose to the grindstone and finding with those other organizations and working through them, so.
Thanks.
Okay. I did, all those in favor, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Lynn.
Item 17 is consider a bid award for Project MC 126BR-14, Structure Replacement for Structure Number 50-143-120. Bid's open December 17, 2014. DJ Boothey.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This first one here is for a bid award for a project that we bid. A few weeks ago, we took an extra week to review the bid tabulations. This is on a county highway and it's to replace the structure in the box culvert that are immediately adjacent to one another and build a large box culvert and replace those two structures. So, the bids were pretty good. We only got four bids on this one, but our engineer's estimate was $370,000 and so we're pretty happy with a bid of $304,000. Dakota Contracting built a box culvert for us this past summer up by Del Rapids and they did a great job on it and so we view them as a reputable contractor and would like to make this bid award.
Any questions for DJ?
I'll make that. Motion.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 18, consider a bid award for Project MC 14-16, Grading, Rip Wrap, and Miscellaneous Repairs to Structures from Minnehaha County Emergency Relief Projects. DJ Boothey.
This contractor, this bid opening had 11 bids on it. This was by far the largest variance of any bid opening I've ever seen on any of my projects at least. $66,224.56 was the low bid. With Sukup Construction, we are happy with that one. Our engineer's estimate is about $75,000. The high bid was just under $200,000 and so a pretty big variance there. One thing I would like to maybe point out here, this large variance, although we don't really know the real reasons for it, we speculate that it's maintenance work that we have to put into a contract, which is not typical for a typical engineering project as well-defined plans, and so this kind of stuff is more difficult to contract out. And so, we have elected in our department to do maintenance asphalt and some people have asked us why we don't contract a lot of that stuff out and it's for stuff like this where it's harder to bid that kind of maintenance work and so doing it with our own crews is typically what we like to do. In this case, with the ER funding that was available, we bid this out and we didn't have enough crews in-house to do all of the work ourselves and so we think that that's why there's a large variance is just because it's more maintenance-type work, it's harder for a contractor to really understand everything that they're gonna have to put for effort towards completing the project, so their bids might be with a little bit more variance than normal.
Okay.
So with that, I would like to award the contract to Sukup Construction. We've worked with them as a subcontractor quite a bit in the past and know them very well, so they are also a reputable contractor.
Commissioner Kelly.
They know the, the engineer's estimate going in, right? Before they bid?
Sometimes they do. It's not published, but if they call, we definitely give that information out.
I have a motion in a second on this. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Barth?
Oh, we don't.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
There are quite a few bids on this and, you know, looking at quite a spread and, you know, one is three times the lowest one. I mean, it's about as large as I've ever seen, I think.
I do not?
I agree.
Any other questions? Excuse me.
I will make a motion.
Okay. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 19 is to authorize the Chairman to sign change order number three for a decrease in the amount of $24,589.59 to the contract with Pram Construction Company for Project MC 121-STR13, the replacement of bridge structures 50-240-85 and 50-240-95 on Highway 121. DJ Boothey.
Commissioner, this is a final change order for us to be able to process the final pay application on the 121 structures. You can see a decrease of just under $25,000, that project, although it went on for much longer than we anticipated, it was a successful project in the end and we're happy to process the final paperwork with your approval of the final change order.
Okay. Any questions for DJ on this? It's always nice to get a big Christmas present before Christmas. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
Item 20 is to authorize the Chairman to sign an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for Force Account Agreement for the 2014 Flood and Emergency Relief Projects. DJ Boothey.
What this agreement does is, it's a standard agreement that the DOT has to execute in order to participate in their reimbursement funding program for the ER work and so they call it a force account agreement and I wish they had a different name for it because that terminology has a little bit of a negative connotation in our industry, but basically what it does is it says that we're eligible for the reimbursement portion of the project set we just got approval to sign a contract for with the ER program.
Any questions for DJ on this?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to authorize the Chairman to sign the agreement between the South Dakota Department of Transportation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 21, consider a motion to deposit proceeds from Iron Planet Auction of various highway department equipment in the amount of $45,276 to the Highway Fund or to the General Fund. DJ Boothey.
On November 11, the Highway Department received authorization to conduct an auction through Iron Planet for nine pieces of equipment and we estimated the gross proceeds for that to be about $30,000. It ended up being about $51,550 for the gross proceeds. After the fees, the net proceeds are $45,276. We have yet to receive the check, although we did receive the proceeds statement and so it's up to the County Commission to decide where the proceeds will be deposited and put into the revenues for the county upon receipt of that check and so, of course, we will request that goes into the Highway Fund. However, according to SDCL 6138, it is up to you guys to decide where you would like to put it.
Are there any questions or comments for DJ? I think this nicely covers the new forklift and skid loader that we purchased this last year, so it covers all of that expense?
Yes.
From sale of scraps.
Yes, it's very close to that.
Yep. Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, we've often taken these proceeds and put them in the General Fund. I will make a motion to put it into the Highway Fund.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second to put the proceeds of the sale into the Highway Fund. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
I have a couple. You know, Madam Chair, you serve as well with I on the planning, the intergovernmental planning thing and we've actually made some progress working with Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls. In fact, we're now going to use exactly the same form for a couple of applications. On our form, we'll use our own logo, but other than that, it'll be the same information right down the line and it truly has been progress on an intergovernmental basis and also I would say that Scott Anderson and his fellow planning chiefs from Lincoln and Sioux Falls are the ones that deserve the credit because they met without us folks and got it lined up before we even got together. I don't know, if I may, Scott, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Two of them that we changed or that they changed were the rezoning in the PUCs and it was a really good meeting.
Yeah, it was a good meeting. Scott Anderson, County Planning, and in addition to that, Commissioner Barth, also we discussed setting forth some general guidelines for hosting, when we host our meetings back and forth, how, maybe like a joint statement that'll be read by whoever's chairing that and that was also helpful, I think, for making these meetings run a lot smoother. We were in the process and I handed those out, or I gave them to Ken McFarlane yesterday, I think he gave them to you, the joint map showing the boundaries with Lincoln County and Minnehaha County. We're gonna put that on the internet, on our website, so it just will be some more information that the public will be able to understand. We did a few tweaks to it to better identify which county was Lincoln County and which one was Minnehaha County, so, because we do get a lot of citizens that are unaware that if you live south of 57th, in the city, you may have to go to Lincoln, to Canton, to pay your taxes, to do whatever, so that is one of the things that we worked on too and that'll be going on the internet as well.
On that joint jurisdiction boundary, it actually had, it was effective April 7, 2005 and so we are going to update the date so it doesn't look when you get on there and say, oh, my goodness, this is a really old map. It's actually not and so they were gonna change the dates on. There's also gonna go one in everybody's drawer so we can pull it out during meetings and it will go in the city council's drawers too, so they have it handy when we're working on joint jurisdiction issues.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Just, this is an example, though, of where it's maybe not a fast-paced progress, but before I came on the Commission, Commissioner Pecus and the Commission at that time worked out a deal with Lincoln County on human services and mental health issues and since then we've expanded to human relations issues and, you know, as we try to make it where we coordinate better for our citizens, I think we're going in the right direction. Government doesn't move as fast as we would like, but we're going in the right direction.
We have another meeting scheduled for January, what was it you guys were gonna bring together?
Well...
We're gonna bring equalization, I think, on board to talk about a few more things.
Equalization and then the three planning directors are gonna work on a couple of other items and come back to it a later date, is my recollection. I can't remember when that meeting is, the 15th, I think, January 15th, that Thursday, right around there.
Yeah, we just have coffee in the morning and discuss some things. Commissioner Barth?
I do have a second item as well and that is that recently I attended a luncheon hosted by the Lloyd Companies up at Safe Home. I know, Madam Chair, you were there as well and it was a great opportunity to renew our acquaintances with the people in the Lloyd Company and also to learn more about the lives of folks that are there at Safe Home and what can I say, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Any other liaison reports? I just have one. I was at the chamber meeting this last week and they read off their platform that they will be bringing forward this next year and one that I think still continues to concern us is the chamber has decided to come out in support of the TIFs as it is currently now and opposes any changes that would negatively impact the program. I did speak out against that it has already been approved by the Executive Board and the Board of Directors at that time, so it didn't really make a difference, but I did make the point again that we're not interested in getting rid of TIFs, we're interested in having a seat at the table because those decisions affect our bottom dollar and I think that we should at least be able to have a seat at the table to have part of that discussion. Any other liaison reports?
You know, I do have a question. Some time ago, we talked about having a county representative from the Southeast District at the session. Where is that gone? It's...
That was actually a good topic of discussion at our last district meeting that we had last week, the week before, when we held it out at the fairgrounds and they've asked that Robert and I kinda help coordinate, working with Bob, identifying what weeks of those sessions would be most critical for us to have reps there and we've been asked to help kinda coordinate that with some of the other counties in the session to figure out what days people can cover. You know, it's kind of always a dicey proposition because you never know when there's gonna be our bills coming up, but just even having the presence there and talking is a good thing that everyone has decided, so we're working on that at the district's request and, you know, I plan on spending much more time this year at session because of some of the issues that we have and so I think that'll give us a good handle in trying to get commissioners up there in order to help augment those efforts, so.
Okay.
It was a good discussion.
Yeah, it was a good discussion.
And the big, you know, I don't think we're gonna have a problem getting Southeast District Commissioners there. I mean, our Southeast Commissioners were really supportive of the idea to do that and that where we're gonna have issues is trying to get counties, I think, from some of the other districts and that who may not be as aggressive on the idea as we are and to get those folks up there, so.
Any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Commissioner Barth?
As a point of personal privilege, I guess I would like to talk for a moment about Commissioner John Pecus, who I've worked with these past eight years and I guess both of us have changed a little bit over the last eight years. You know, he's certainly the most knowledgeable one of our crew here today and it's been a great benefit to our county to have him on this board and, you know, he'll be replaced, but he'll be missed. Thank you, John.
Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate that.
John, you had a comment?
Well, I was just gonna talk about the fact that Gerald, you know, isn't here and we have this other issue that's coming up and, you know, the reason I'm not gonna be here is that we go on this annual ski trip and we're supposed to drive back on the 30th and so one other option that we have is that I could call in and that might be something that we could do next week. My hope, though, is that we're usually on the road by seven or eight in the morning, which would be eight or nine here, but if we could move it up on the agenda, I could call in and we could get that vote taken. If we could just coordinate that, let the media know, we could easily get our unanimous vote because we will be hitting the road about then. That's the only reason why I didn't even think about that.
The only other option that you could have is you could go into exec session.
That was my thought.
With the intent of coming back out just in case Commissioner Benega does show up to take this action.
Sure.
I will tell you that we've just not been successful in reaching him by phone at his I will tell you that we've just not been successful on reaching him by phone at his contact point, so I don't know what to tell you.
Let's just, let's just plan on...
Is it a tax?
That's, that's what we'll do. We'll just do that, and...
If that doesn't work, then we'll defer to the 30th.
Right, exactly. So I'll just make a, let's just make a motion to defer to the 30th for now. And we'll just plan on doing a call-in.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a motion to defer to the 30th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And under old business, I too want to say thank you for four years that I have worked with you. It has been a pleasure. John always comes happy. I told him a couple months ago, I'd only ever seen him mad once at a commission meeting, and I think he had good reason to be. I don't remember what it was.
I don't remember either.
But he's, he's always happy, and he's always got a positive attitude when it comes to work. I think Minnehaha County is very lucky to be getting John as a judge. He knows his stuff, and I think he will be fair. And I think he will make an excellent judge for us. And we will miss him here. He has been very valuable to this board, having an extra legal opinion on sitting up here up front. So thank you, John, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
I guess I'd just like to add that it's been a pleasure working with John for the last six years. And the institutional knowledge is always hard to lose.
Yeah, it is.
But we got a friend up in the court now, too.
Yeah, and...
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you, you guys. And I guess I wasn't really planning on making any speeches or anything today. This is my last meeting, though. I'll be calling in next week, but it'll be very short, I hope. So I guess I'll just go back, and I've been very fortunate. You know, when I, when I first ran in 1998, I lost. And everybody, if you ever run for political office, has to lose an election to really get, I, I think, the full effect of the responsibility and the obligations that come with the office. And with that being said, I did get elected in the year 2000, and I came on board. And I'd have to say that for the first nine months being on the commission, it was a really interesting time, because we had other interest areas in this county that quite honestly got completely set back on 9/11. I mean, it kind of cleared the deck. I remember when 9/11 happened, we were sitting right here at this desk, and we were watching things unfold. And we kept on having law enforcement walk in here telling us what was going on. And I remember, we thought maybe we should go ahead, and we didn't know the scope of the attack. We thought maybe we should go ahead and dismiss and, and see what was going on. But no, we, we didn't know the, the breadth of the attack, but we kept going. And then that night, I remember, we had a meeting down at City Hall. You sat right next to me. You were a city councillor at the time.
Yeah.
And we didn't know what the effect was going to be locally. I remember Governor Janklow was considering about calling out the constabulary, which would have been you, Kirsten, although I don't know how old you would have been in the year 2000. You can take the...
I was not a lawyer yet, I can tell you that.
But...
I won't reveal.
You know, and in that time, we've had amazing challenges that county government have faced with, with law enforcement. And if you look at our budget and you look at what happened after September 11th, you can see it in our budget. You know, law enforcement, the grants that we've been involved with, quite honestly, are focused primarily on law enforcement. And even today, we're dealing with law enforcement as the vast, largest responsibility that we have in county government. And it's across the state of South Dakota. But with even all the financial challenges that we've had, that, that we've overcome, you know, I've had to opt out of the property tax limitations five times. You're right. And I think only one time did someone take out a petition, but they didn't turn it in. And that's amazing when you think about the, the work that, that the county governments have to do, and the challenges that we face every budget season. And we don't do flashy things. We don't do the event centers or anything like that. But we do the critical infrastructure that is necessary for government. And believe me, if, if the county government shrugged its shoulders like Atlas, we would have some serious problems in this state. And I say this state, because Minnehaha County is the flagship for the state of South Dakota. And although I'm going to be leaving and moving on to the bench, I'm just, you know, 200 feet over there, you will know that you have somebody that's very aware of the county issues and the state issues that are being foisted off on county government. And the very important relationships that we have, the people that I've served with here at the county, not only the commissioners, which have been amazing people, they give their time so willingly, and they pay such attention to the numbers that we have here in Minnehaha County and the, and the responsibilities that we have. I, it's, it's amazing that we have the people here in this community that are willing to serve, but also the department heads and the other elected people that are out there. Everybody is doing their hardest to make sure that we are all doing government's work in the best way possible. And I hope it's apparent to everybody that's out there. So with that being said, I leave this county with, with somewhat of a broken heart, because, you know, I love my job. I love being a commissioner. I love teaching people out of NEU, and I love practicing law. But with that being said, I'm ready for new challenges as well. So I'm looking forward to my new position. So thank you to the people of Minnehaha County, and thank you to this commission in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Just get an email from Commissioner, or Commissioner Benning. He is on his way. So if we just dismiss to executive session to come back out, we can...
Sure.
...complete this item.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recess and to contract legal briefing and a brief personnel matter that I want to bring up. And then we can come back into session.
Can we clarify that we're sending the deferral to, in your motion?
We'll rescind that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We're sending, and we're sending the deferral to next week.
I'm seconding that.
Let's see if Cindy's got it. Questions? Okay. Just wanted to make sure you didn't have any questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion recessed, or meeting recessed unanimously.